Okay.
All right, Mayor and Council, Assistant City Manager Rodney Gonzalez, and with me is Assistant City Manager Chris Shorter. We're going to provide a briefing on homelessness initiatives. The outline of the topics for today are to go over the January seventeenth memorandum that was sent to council as an update on homelessness initiatives. At that point then, we will bring up certain priority area leads to provide an update specific to their areas in homeless service delivery, cleanups and storage, and then communications. And then with us today are leadership from Salvation Army, who will provide a presentation on the overview of homeless services provided by the Salvation Army, a flow chart of their services, as well as performance highlights, program outputs, and program goals. With regard to the January seventeenth memo that was provided to council, as indicated in memo, twenty nineteen was the year of transition. The homeless strategy officer position was created in that budget year. We filled the position both in an interim and permanent basis in twenty nineteen. Also, what we did as staff was we developed priority area leads in five different areas of homelessness services, delivery, public safety, cleanup and storage, and communications, and housing. And those area leads have really helped us to coordinate all of our efforts across the city and with our partner agencies. We've been meeting on a routine basis so that way we can make sure that the work that we do is not in isolation, but it is as a coordinated effort. That period of work stabilization allowed us then to review the past year, what worked well, what could have been improved, what's a better approach to service delivery. And so the memo outlines some changes that we have made with regard to our approach of homeless service delivery. First and foremost, we have formed an executive leadership team of the Deputy City Manager Nurya Rivera Vandermeide, myself, Assistant City Manager Chris Shorter, and Austin Public Health Director Stephanie Hayden. Our goal is, of course, to provide that strategic overview of homeless services delivery for the city of Austin and our partner agencies. We have created a homeless services division. It's important to note that there was never actually a creation of a homeless services office, but rather the officer position. We have now created a division that will be within the Austin Public Health Division, which is, of course, under Assistant City Manager Chris Shorter's purview. We have assigned three full-time equivalent positions, as well as we plan to hire additional temporary staff to support the homeless services division. And Assistant City Manager Chris Shorter will go over the work and the scope of work for the homeless services division. And council may recall that on December fifth, you authorized the approval of a contract for an external consultant to assist us with reviewing the performance measures that we have in various contracts that we use for homeless services delivery. And it is our intention to, of course, continue utilizing external consultants who have some national expertise in this area. So from time to time, you may see us bring up a consultant contract for consideration from council. With that, I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Chris Shorter, who will also go over some elements in the memo.
Thank you, Rodney. Again, Chris Shorter, Assistant City Manager, covering outcomes associated with health, environment, culture, and lifelong learning. As Rodney mentioned, the creation of the homeless services division within Austin Public Health is underway. We hope to see that the division will serve essentially as a single point of contact for all efforts, operational efforts associated with homelessness and homelessness activities. We are also in the process of making sure that the priorities associated with the management direction and policy direction that council has given are aligned. The division will serve as essentially the citywide operational coordinator, if you will, for all homeless services. In the creation of the priority leads, what we found was that creating a division within public health to help coordinate and make sure that those leads have the support that they need and the staff within the division has the support it needs. We believe that this is a great path forward and a great way for us to support homeless services citywide. I'd also say that in terms of, and this is reflected in the memo that was sent on the seventeenth, convening internal and external partners will also be a very primary component of the work done by this division. This division will also continue to evaluate the effectiveness of contracts really citywide for homelessness and homeless services, as well as enhancing the diversion system supports. There are a host of activities listed in the memo for your awareness and information, and wanted to provide an opportunity, obviously, to answer any questions that you may have based on what was covered in the memo. As Rodney alluded to, we have, based on the approval on December fifth, begun to work with Barbara Poppy and Associates to help with the review of all contracts and grants associated with homeless services citywide. That contract is now in place, based on your approval, and we will begin the process in February of working with Barbara and her team to make sure that they have the information they need to provide the review. And as Rodney mentioned, we are also continuing to assess national experts and receive the support that we need here in Austin to make sure that we're on the cutting edge, we're working with federal partners, and with national organizations where there is funding opportunity, we want to make sure that we tap into it. I think that covers... In terms of guided path, you also, what was reflected in the memo sent on the seventeenth, the Guided Path Program, and for context, the program began in October of twenty nineteen, really as an effort to make sure that we were supporting those clients that were outside of the arch area and those living in encampments around the city. And so the Guided Path Program is now at a point where we believe we want to and need to add additional investments to ensure that that program really is an encampment strategy citywide. And so what you will see reflected in the council agenda are amendments to the budget associated with Guided Path to really make sure that we continue to advance the program and make it as effective as possible citywide. So again, available for any questions that you might have.
Also, within the memo, Mayor and Council, you may recall that staff had proffered the Microtel Hotel as a potential acquisition. Staff is no longer pursuing that property for various zoning and site-related issues. However, with regards to the roadway end, we continue our due diligence on that property, and so we're working towards closing that property, of course. And we, of course, continue to research and identify other potential properties in accordance with the process that we had provided to council on November twenty-sixth. There are a number of other updates that were within the memo, and at this point, we'll bring up the various priority area leads, unless council has specific questions related to the topics that both Assistant City Manager Shorter and I have covered.
Councilmember Kitchen and Councilmember Alter have questions. So Councilmember Kitchen?
Okay, I did have a question about the Guided Path and the homeless encampment strategy. I just want to make sure that I heard that correctly. So the agenda items that we have coming to us that provide additional resources for some of our partners, is that, did I hear you right, that that's in order to extend the homeless encampment strategy, the Guided Path approach, beyond the area around the arch to other parts of the city?
It is, and I'll let the director speak to it. We are essentially adding capacity for the program and want to make sure that we raise it to council for approval. Director Hayden, I don't know if you want to?
Good morning. Stephanie Hayden, Director, Austin Public Health. As you may recall, when the Guided Path started, it was a pilot, and we asked the agencies to use their existing resources to be able to go ahead and get the pilot up and running. And so, as you know, the system is quite full. And so that was a sacrifice for the agencies to be able to do that. And so what this allows is, is this allows for the expansion, at least for a couple of years, for them to add additional capacity and have those positions and being able to provide that. Currently, we are still focusing on the individuals that they are working on. We are going to kind of revamp and look at hotspots within the city so we can expand that and make some additional changes to that program.
What is the timeline for looking at additional hotspots?
We're doing that right now.
And you may not know the answer to this yet, but do you have an anticipated timeline for actually addressing other areas or working with individuals that are in other areas?
So currently, once this funding is approved, we have to amend those contracts, and then they have to hire staff. So we have to allow them time to hire staff. And then, as they're doing that process, then we are, we're still convening, that group is still convening weekly, the just staff cases, and so we're looking at kind of where those expansions will be. So at least over the next probably month, we will be at that point, depending on how long it takes them to hire folks.
Okay, and then at some point, as you complete that process, I assume you'll let us know what the hotspots are?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to clarify some information about the items that were on our agenda. So you mentioned that it was for multiple years. I thought that was one-time funding that it was based off of. So have we extended the contract for multiple years or just for this amount of money?
It is for this amount of money, but the agencies have provided a budget to us, and we will be able to encumber the funds, and it will be able to stretch across this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
Okay, does that mean that we're taking our 1.5 million and stretching it across a couple of years, or is there additional funding that we are appropriating for this need moving forward by taking this action?
We have, we, we're not taking it from the 1.5 million. We are taking it from some other line items of one-time dollars.
Okay. I'll probably want to just talk with someone to make sure that I'm understanding the details of it. I saw the, you know, five or six items of a hundred thousand. I understand that we are adding resources, and I appreciate that, but I want to have some greater clarity on the source of funding and how we are doing that over time. And the, as I'm understanding it, we had a one-time pot of money for something that has morphed into Guided Path, which was just a broad category that we had set aside in the budget, and we're now taking that money and putting additional resources into our providers that have been working on the Guided Path to make that successful. Is that correct understanding? Okay. I would like to understand a little bit better some of those fiscal details, and we can, we can take that offline. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Tobo?
Thank you. Thanks very much for the update and for the memo. I had a couple of quick questions about, about the memo, about specific things in the memo. First of all, I want to say, I think the structure, as I understand it, and I probably, I mean, so, as I understood the presentation and the memo, there will be an Assistant City Manager leadership team, level leadership team, and then the homeless strategy office will live within public health. Is that... And I just wanted to say, I think that structure, City Manager, is really, is really wise. I think it utilizes the very significant expertise we have within our public health department and the staff who have been working on these issues, and really have the confidence and trust of our social service providers and our housing providers. So I really like, I like that direction a lot. And then, just to dig into a few of the details, the Guided Path pilot results that are on page three of five in our memo, the eighteen individuals, it says eighteen individuals have been housed, one was reunited with family. Is that one of the eighteen, or is that a total of nineteen housed?
That is, that is within the eighteen.
And then, could you give us some examples of the appropriate programs, the sixty individuals who are enrolled or pending enrollment into appropriate programs? I assume they're waiting for, could you give us some examples of the programs and kind of what, what the wait is about, just for those who are following this conversation? I assume they're waiting for units to open up in some of those programs, but if you could give us just a few examples of what some of those are?
So yes, so the sixty individuals are currently, you know, working with agencies, Caritas and Caritas, Integral Care. And so basically, they've been assigned a case manager. The case manager is working with them on an individualized treatment plan, which has housing-specific goals as well as other social service goals. And so if the individual needs a driver's license, if they are applying for social security disability, they are helping them with that, if they have any evictions, any kind of criminal background. And so really needing to be able to match them up with a unit. In addition to that, we really, really want the case managers to put them in a, house them in a safe and stable place where they're not paying more than thirty percent of their income. And then some folks may not have income, so that's why we're working with them to get the social security disability. You know, some of the folks also have been connected to the other ones to be a part of that work program. And so it's really a holistic approach that really, really looks at each individual for the needs that they present with.
And since you mentioned the other ones program, almost every time we have this conversation, I run into people in the community or get emails afterward asking about creating a work program. So if you could just say a few words about the existing work program, I think that would be helpful. I think people are very excited in that kind of initiative and aren't always aware that we, that we have one and are continuing to expand it.
The other ones program is a program, an employment program, which the goal is, is that we don't want people to be on the corner of panhandling, so it's an alternative to panhandling. And what it does is, is that it provides gainful employment and employment skills. They have a job coach as well as a case manager. Some individuals, you know, are just wanting to come and do the work and be paid, and so we are partnering with our park system as well as watershed protection to be able to do those cleanups, and they also do the cleanup encampments as well. They have also, even though this, that's not a part of their contract, and they're doing more workforce development-type work, they have also been able to house individuals as well in their program. So it's really been a very successful program. We were able to add some additional funding this year in the budget process, and so it's been working very well.
Thank you very much. So there are also fourteen individuals who are not yet matched with programs for enrollment. What is the, what's the, what are the challenges there? The capacity of the organizations, the amount of resources, all?
It's actually a combination of both. You know, most agencies, in order to really provide the type of case management, you really don't want to have a caseload over about twenty-three, twenty-five max to be able to provide that very intensive case management, because when you're, when you're working with folks that have intensive needs, the likelihood of that you will be talking with them every day and doing some type of interaction with them every day. So you want to keep that caseload small. And so we are, at this point, you know, we want to go ahead and add this additional capacity and kind of take a gauge of where we are. The department is having additional conversations with the agencies to see how much additional capacity they can, you know, that they may be able to add. But right now, we just, we want to hold off. And then, as people are housed and that supportive housing case manager can follow them, then we'll be able to pick up the other fourteen that are on the list.
Okay, thank you. Are we talking about storage separately, or if we have questions about that? Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Flanagan?
In reading through the memo, it, there's only one mention of Echo, like in the middle of a list of bullet points. I like the idea of our homeless efforts being, or living in the public health department, that makes sense to me. But it's sounding like we are taking on, in this new division, Echo's job. And so I want to understand the role of the lead agency for the continuum of care, the one federally designated by the federal government, the one that can access matching funds in a way that we can't match them. I had had this question even before I saw the memo about the split of the contracts, because it seems like the right way systems should do this is you contract with Echo with a Guiding Path project, and then they work with the individual vendors. I worry about duplication of work and who's actually in charge. Can you speak to the role of Echo in all of this, please?
So I'll start, and obviously Director Hayden will talk primarily about this sort of role of the lead agency in serving the continuum. In terms of within our, within our government organization, there is a great deal of work that is done, not just at public health, but really across the enterprise. And so the goal here is not to do what Echo should be doing in terms of the provision of services, but instead to make sure that there is a coordinator on the government side who's making sure that all of the contracts associated with services, all of the work that our public safety agencies, our housing agencies, housing programs, et cetera, that there is a place where that is being coordinated and is being coordinated from a government perspective. It doesn't necessarily speak to all of the various contracts and liaising that will be done by public health with a group like Echo. So I completely understand the question, and it doesn't, our reorganizing to make sure that we are coordinating operations doesn't necessarily put us in conflict with the role that the lead agency plays in terms of the provision of services. And I don't know, Director Hayden, if you want to add?
So I think one of the things that Echo does, as you mentioned, with the continuum of care, Echo does convene all of the housing providers, because they submit the federal application on behalf of Travis County for the continuum of care. That role that they play will continue. They will continue to convene, they will continue to be the author of the action plan. Austin Public Health has always partnered with Echo in various roles, and so that entire continuum of care process through HUD, they will continue to do that. So basically, this is just really more of a seamless of change. Austin Public Health has been in the business of doing this work even before Echo had been created. Sometime back, the reason why Echo was created was because the director at the time wanted to make sure an outside entity had that contact with HUD and was able to move forward the continuum of care, do all of that solicitation, and work with the partners in order for that project to be outside of the city. And so those things will continue, and we will continue to support Echo and partner with them. There's things that we do together jointly, and that continuum of care is one of them. Our staff sit on that membership council, as well as neighborhood housing staff sit on it. And so, but there are other things that the department moves forward, and Echo has a staff person a part of it. So there's not really things that we don't do together collaboratively, but there are efforts that they, you know, lead holistically, and there are efforts that, that we continue to lead based upon our, our financial investment in this, you know, in homelessness.
I'll also add that, so one of the, one of the benefits of having national experts like Barbara Poppy and Associates come in and really take a look at and make sure that we are sort of operating based on best practice. And this is one of the areas that they'll be looking at, so making sure that we are appropriately working based on national best practice with our lead, that that lead is appropriately engaging the community of service providers. And so there certainly is more to come, and if there are recommendations that we need to sort of incorporate within our operation, we certainly are prepared to do that in a couple of months, once Barbara Poppy and her team are here and provide recommendations.
I'm really very interested in this conversation and the interplay with Echo. I wouldn't necessarily want to point to things we've done in the past as evidence of what we should do in the future. Obviously, we're trying to, we didn't do it right in the past as a city or a region. I'm much more interested in seeing Echo as the entity in charge of solving this problem, not us. And what I worry about is that Echo is being perceived as a vendor to the city and that we're in charge, and my understanding is that is not a national best practice, that the national best practice is that the lead agency is the one in charge of outcomes. We obviously become a primary funder to those outcomes, but I don't want a situation where a housing provider goes to Echo with an idea, Echo says no, and then they just turn around and come to a council member who then works the politics to get yes. And now what we have now, where providers are getting money from one hand or the other hand, and then in some cases, they get it from one place, and then they just contract back through the system in another place to get it done. It's not an efficient system. As I talked to, of course, when we say Travis County, we're also talking about the Williamson County portion of the city, which is included in Echo's work, but there's also a separate continuum of care, the statewide balance of state, Texas Homeless Network, that has responsibility for Williamson County, where, as we learn from the Salvation Army, we are getting some of our clients being sent to our Salvation Army in Austin, because the Salvation Army in Round Rock doesn't have as many resources. And so we need to be collaborating in a way between our two agencies, Echo and THN, in a way that I don't know that government agencies are set up to do. So I have a lot more conversations about how that's going to go. I also think it's important, because when we ask about job programs, the other ones is not the only one in this community. Caritas has a program with White Lodging to take folks experiencing homelessness and get them work with case management and support in the hospitality industry. We're not contracting to do that, but when we talk to the public about this, we need to ensure that all of these programs are being included. That's why I think Echo as a lead agency is important to be running everything through, because we're going to naturally just talk about the stuff the city is doing, but that's not what the community is asking for. So please let, please engage with my office on this conversation, because I'm going to keep bringing it up. And then the other question I have is, we have the Guided Path results so far. What do we expect the results to be with this next round of contracts? What are our goals that we should expect to see the next time you guys, you all come back to us with a report?
The ultimate goal is, is that we do want to get the existing people that we are working with housed, and so that is the primary goal, is to go ahead and get all of the people housed and stably housed. So even once they are housed, we want to make sure that they're receiving that case management support so they maintain the housing. So that's the first goal. Then the next goal is, is as we are looking at the hotspots and being able to ramp up our, the process and being able to provide additional support and services to folks that are, this was just the folks that were outside of the arch, so we were looking to expand and be in more areas. And so the goal will be is, is get another subset of folks and work with them and get them stably housed, and then continue to work as we work throughout the city to get people housed.
Are there numerical goals that you're looking at for the next round?
So currently, we have not set numerical goals, but what we use as our guiding, our, like North Star, is, is we use the strategic direction, performance measures that are there that says a percentage of folks will be stably housed. And so of all the people that we're working with, we have a formula that is a performance measure that measures how many people are remaining stably housed and a percentage of those. So that's our North Star.
If it's possible, as you go through more detail, to have expectations put out to the community, that would be helpful, so we can get a sense of, you know, did the first, did the pilot project have a lot of setup time that we don't have to do in the second round? So maybe that eighteen number gets up to twenty-five because we're faster and we already have the connections in place. Or, or maybe the easy ones went first, and the next round is going to be harder, because once you take care of the faster ones, I mean, just, just a sense of our trajectory as we go down this road. Thanks.
I don't think what your concerns are and what you're expecting is that far from what our staff has explained their role in the, in the overall thing. It sounds like the lead people will still continue to be the lead social service part of it, but we're just trying to get a better handle on being responsive to the community when they're asking us questions about what are you doing? when they're asking us questions about what are you doing? And so we have a, that's what it sounds like to me, is we're trying to just get a better understanding of what's out there. And then in addition to the, you know, what Echo hears, you know, all kinds of concerns from, you know, trash pickup and that kind of thing. And then it sounds to me that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this provides an opportunity for you to then go talk to Austin Resource Recovery and like, we have channels that we can work through to help address Echo and vice versa. And it's just trying to get more, I guess, transparency and coordination is what I heard.
That's exactly right. And so ultimately, as you've explained, there are very specific provisions of service that Echo and the community of providers are responsible for that is critical. But when it comes to making sure that encampments are clean, that we are focused on housing, communications associated with the work that's being done, essentially all of the priority area leads in the reports that they have been providing and updates that they've been providing, that Echo needs to be able to liaison with the city to get that work done. And so I think what this will do is allow for us to more seamlessly operate within our enterprise and get information to you as council members and get information to the community. So that's absolutely right.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes, thank you. So Councilwoman Flanagan, I really appreciate your focus on results because that's what we need to be doing and I appreciate that. And so I agree with, I agree with everything that you said. I want to add a bit of my perspective in relation to timeline and Echo's role. I don't see Echo as a lead agency perhaps yet. And the reason for that is they're not set up as a lead, as what I would see a lead agency in terms of public oversight or any of those kinds of things that we have in place for folks that operate as agencies. So I think that that can happen and can get there and they're also doing quite a bit right now to coordinate, which is their role in the community. But I would not, I don't think that we're in a position yet as a community where the city can forego, and I'm not saying you were suggesting this, but I don't think the city can forego our oversight role in regards to the use of our public dollars. And because we don't, I don't think Echo is set up and our relationship with Echo is set up in a way that we can really, that we really have that oversight. And I look forward to future conversations because I do agree with you that we need to be coordinated and that's one of the things that makes it difficult to really get results, to really get results. So I don't know, I don't know that you were saying all that. I'm just saying that my perspective, when I think about the role of Echo, is I think it's really important that Echo play a central role in the, in the community and I know they're doing that and I'm really appreciative of them stepping up to the plate with regard to the shelters at motels. But it's new for them and it's unproven and I want to see how they do and I want to continue to work with them. And I am not ready to just hand things off to them. And again, I'm not suggesting that you said that. I'm just giving my perspective on the, on the role.
Councilmember Tovo, did you have your light on?
I did.
So I just got to let Councilmember Flanagan respond very briefly to wrap that part of the conversation and then hand it over to you.
Thank you. My hope is that we see the timeline to get Echo to that capacity. So there's a capacity building element, I think, that's missing in the conversation, but it is, it is for better oversight, not less oversight. I'll give you a quick example in a different topic area. In workforce development, for example, we have a similar system where there's an agency, Workforce Solutions, that has access to grants and matching funding and otherwise, that if our workforce development processes went through them, they would be tapping into more, I mean, we're leaving dollars on the table. We are at Echo, we are with Workforce Solutions. And I'm hearing from Workforce Solutions that in some cases, there are vendors who are contracting with the city directly and with Workforce Solutions directly, and they're counting the same clients for both money. So it's actually worse oversight if multiple agencies are doing the contracting because you don't actually get to know where the crossover is. So if we were, if we can get Echo to the place where they've got the capacity to do it, it's better oversight because only one place is counting the one clients for the dollars they're getting for it. This is an example.
Councilmember Tovo?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Flanagan, for pointing out that there are other work programs that are being utilized to employ individuals experiencing homelessness. The Downtown Austin Community Court also does it, so thanks for, thanks for pointing that out. We have, we have several and I think it's important for the public to know that these exist and that, because many people, you know, are interested in seeing those go forward. And I just want to say that I'm really glad that our city is continuing, City Manager, that you are shepherding an increased coordination among the different departments within the city that are, that are working on these efforts. I think that's very necessary and very needed and Echo has certainly done that within, within the community and within the network of social service, many, not all, of the social service providers and the housing providers that participate in that continuum of care. You know, I see it as an ecosystem and we need all of those parts and so, you know, the city is going to need to continue to be one. I just want to, I don't really want to embark on another argument along the lines of the one that we had last fall, but I think it's really critical, given the conversations and some of the really misguided comments that I hear out in the public. I think it's absolutely important to say that I just disagree with the comment that the city hasn't always done this well or right. We have a tremendous lack of necessary resources, but this city and our really talented staff in Public Works and in other areas across our city have, have been working assiduously on providing resources and housing to individuals experiencing homelessness, as have our social service providers and our housing providers. You know, I think Ann Howard of Echo said it well, that, you know, we as a community know what we need to do and are very successful at housing individuals and keeping them housed. Our rates of keeping individuals who are experiencing, have previously experienced homelessness, keeping them housed are very high. And Austin is recognized as a leader for some of the initiatives that are going forward between the veterans homelessness, effort to end homelessness among veterans and now youth, the homelessness outreach street team, the pay for success model. I mean, these are national best practices. And so, you know, I would hate for our staff or for those who are working, you know, day in and day out and have for years to go away thinking that, that your council, you know, believes that we haven't done those things well. We have, we just never have allocated enough resources as a community, not just as a city, but really as a community to really get us to that goal of ending homelessness. And so, you know, I'm really glad to see more attention in the public about this because I hope that also leads to increased resources, which is what we need. We have very talented staff, talented housing providers, talented social service providers. They just all lack the resources they need to meet, to meet the needs of the number of individuals who are experiencing homelessness.
I think those are all the questions. Are there more presentations?
Yes, thank you, Director Hayden, for providing that update on homelessness services delivery. Next, I'll call up Austin Resource Recovery Director Ken Snipes, who will provide an update on cleanup and storage.
Good morning, Mayor Portem, manager, council members. My name is Ken Snipes, Director of Austin Resource Recovery, here to give you an update on what we've been doing with the homelessness cleanup efforts and also storage. Not a lot to update on since we last talked about the cleanup activities, but there are some differences that I want to talk about related to storage. But with the encampment cleanup, I would say that the main thing that we've done is complete a draft for a policy and procedure update. It is currently under review and we should know more about that by the end of the week. The Violet Bag Program has a couple of changes. The number of sites serviced by the Bag Program has expanded. Initially, the pilots serviced 183 and Cameron Road, 183 and Olin Road, 71 and Pax Saddle, and also Interstate 35 and Cesar Chavez. The program has now expanded to 183 and Burnett Road and also Pleasant Valley and Cesar Chavez. The location at 183 and Olin was removed as the campers have left the site. We will continue to keep eyes on the site, but we no longer have the Violet Bag Program operating there. The, over the holiday period, we did not conduct encampment cleanups. So in effect, on the ground, what you would have seen there is about a two-week period where there were no cleanups that took place during that, during that timeframe. And then right after the first of the year, the cleanup started again. The activities are ongoing and we continue to operate with a joint effort with also TechDOT and various city departments as well. Storage, so what are we doing with storage? One of the things that we have noticed is that storage is a beneficial service for those experiencing homelessness. A few of the benefits include protecting people's assets from either theft or loss. What we have explored is what is a best practice model nationwide, which is using a large warehouse-type storage facility. We did some work to explore usage of the Health South parking garage. It looks like initially that the facility will be useful in that effort. We are currently working through a fire code compliance issue, but other than that, we think we can move forward with setting that site up for storage. The model that we will use is a model that has been used quite successfully in San Diego and we're currently speaking with them and several other cities that are managing their storage programs right now to see how best we'd be able to provide that service here in the city of Austin. Currently, we have provided support for the arch. We've provided 60 carts that they are currently using for storage on a smaller scale in their facility. And the Parks Department has also purchased several shipping containers that they will use to store belongings of homeless people as they encounter them, as they perform their cleanups. And they've also made that available to other city departments as well, so that we can provide their support. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Tovo?
I do, thank you. Thanks for that update and I know that this is a real need and so I appreciate your working on it and I hope that, I hope that we're soon going to get one of those alternatives on the ground. So I had a question about some of the language in the memo. It talked about citywide lockers, which sound like a good idea, some individuals experiencing homelessness cannot mobilize for storage. Can you help me understand what that means? Is it because the larger structures are hard to use? I'm not sure, I just don't understand the language of cannot mobilize for storage, what that means exactly.
Yeah, I think the intent is to highlight the fact that in some cases, some people are not going to go to a certain site, you know, in a certain portion of the city. And the idea is that we wanted to create a program that would be easy to use for whomever. And so the lockers would give a means of flexibility for those in need of storage. They would be dispersed throughout the city and maybe positioned at various locations. One of the locations we've talked about is a couple of the park facilities where they experience larger populations of homelessness. And so we would have the ability there to put those lockers in a place where people wouldn't have, wouldn't have to transition to the health force site.
Got it, thank you. I couldn't, it wasn't clear to me whether, it sounds like it's about travel and kind of location versus the structure being challenging to work with for some individuals.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And just back to Health South as an option, would that be, I know that we have a parking arrangement right now where that parking and the parking garage is being rented. Is this, is the storage, can the storage happen alongside that parking arrangement or would we need to wait for that lease to end? I think it's in March for the storage to be deployed.
No, it's our understanding that we don't have to wait for the lease to end, but we also don't think we'll need the entire facility, the entire structure. And so there is an opportunity to use it for both purposes.
Great. How many storage containers do you think you could house at Health South?
Well, we're looking to start with 300 and we do know that we have space for 300 at that location.
At Health South along with the parking?
Correct.
Wow, okay. That's more than I would have guessed. And then speaking of Health South, we've been trying for some time to get a full accounting of what the, what repairs would be critical for that to be used as housing in the interim while we're waiting for the RFPs to come in and also for that, hopefully for the design, the design and the initial work to create housing on that site, permanent housing on that site, market rate, as well as a significant component of affordable housing in alignment with that council resolution. But in the interim, that building is vacant and so it would be really useful. I mean, I know that we've had conversations in this setting before about, about the challenges of using that in the interim because of the repairs, but I don't really have a solid accounting of what those, what the most critical repairs would be and how much those would cost. Is there, is that something that's been, works that has been completed? I know that we've been talking with real estate and with others since about June on that, but it would be really helpful, I think, for the public and for the council to just know what are, what are the actual repairs that would need, need to be done for that building to be occupied.
Councilmember, I understand the request and I'll just check with staff and then get back to you on where we're at with that process.
Thank you. Councilmember Kitchen?
Thank you all very much and thank you for the report on the, the storage and the Violet Bag Program and those things. I have just a few questions about that. So can you remind us about how often the cleanups are occurring? I was understanding that that was once a week, is that correct or not?
The cleanups are taking place twice a week, Councilmember.
Okay.
And the Violet Bag and litter cleanups are taking place twice a week.
Okay.
And the encampment cleanups are taking place twice a month.
Oh, okay, okay. So, okay, so the cleaning up the bags and the garbage cans and that is twice a week?
Correct.
Okay, and then I wanted to ask about the areas that are on the sides of freeways? We've started to, to see some areas where there's quite a bit of trash and I know other parts of the city may have already been seeing that, but on the Ben White area in particular, there's quite a bit of trash along the side of the freeway, not under the overpasses. So are those areas that are included in the cleanups?
They had not been, but we're just now exploring that as we've seen the same issue as now.
Okay.
More and more people have moved out from underneath the actual overhead structure and so we're going to be engaging with TechDOT to get a better sense of how, how we should proceed, we being them or us, in terms of cleaning those areas along the, along the side stretches.
When would we have an answer to that? Because that's been a problem for a while now.
Maybe I would say for sure by the end of the month. We meet with them on a regular basis to talk about the overpass cleanups and we can start to put the sides on the, on the table as a topic as well.
So you think by the end of January, which is the end of this week, you would have an answer to that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As to an approach you're expecting?
Well, yes, I'd like to understand what the answer to the approach is and also like to understand when that answer will be implemented. And I think it's something that we need to respond to as quickly as possible. Thank you. And then finally, I would just echo Councilmember Tovo's request with regard to Health South. That's something I think we have talked about for a while, about the use of that building during the interim, because it's just sitting empty right now in the face of, you know, really some very critical needs. So as soon as y'all can respond to that, that would be helpful. Then the council can make a decision about whether we want to use that and whether we want to put the resources towards what it takes to be able to use it. As it is right now, it's just, it's just in limbo and, you know, while, while time passes and, you know, we have great needs, so.
And just to close out, Councilmember, for clarity, I just wanted to say that currently the scope for the cleanups are the underpassed areas. And so you're asking about the sides and I can get an answer on that pretty quickly, but as far as working out an agreement on who's going to do what along those stretches, that's currently not under scope, but I'll work on that as well.
Yeah, I just, I don't want the back and forth. Yeah, I just, I don't want the back and forth. I understand we, we're working with Tech Dot and we have to, I just don't want the back and forth to take a long time, you know, to, for this to get stuck in, in the, you know, in the processes that occur on our side and on Tech Dot's side. Um, I just think we need to cut through all that and move quickly.
When you, uh, when you say you're, you said you're working with Tech Dot, uh, so they are helping clean the, can you explain what that relationship is with Tech Dot?
Yes, so what, what they did is they, um, you remember they published a list of, uh, sites that they would be cleaning, and so what we did was coordinate with them, uh, just to make sure that we're not cleaning the same site, so we're not going to the same locations and relocating work at those, uh, specific sites.
Okay.
Uh, and so we've kinda been working through those relationships to time up, uh, when we're doing what versus when they're doing it. So for example, uh, the, we, uh, the overpasses are, are, the, um, cleanups are happening twice a month, and there are some sites where one of those, uh, is being done by us and then one is being done by Tech Dot.
Okay.
Uh, and then there are other sites that, uh, are solely being cleaned up by us where, uh, we do, uh, the cleanups both, uh, times ourselves.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Harper-Madison?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, uh, to address councilmember Tovo and councilmember Kitchen's concerns around, um, the utilization of the space that is Health South, um, and say, uh, to staff who's worked on it already, my office has been told numerous times, countless times, that it's not a viable option in the interim to use that space in that way. And just as a matter of professional courtesy, Health South is in District One. If you have questions about what will happen with Health South moving forward, I'd like very much for the conversation to start with your colleague as we move forward, talking to the various departments about what will happen there.
Can I add one last comment?
Sure.
Um, the storage option is not in the building proper, it's the parking garage, right? So it's, it's, the two are separate.
Uh, councilmember Ellis?
Uh, quickly, while you're having conversations about, you know, who's gonna take care of which aspects of those, um, cleanups along right-of-way, I know that on 290 proper, like underneath Tech Dot bridges, I believe they're Tech Dot right-of-way, to the underpass of 290, which is definitely their right-of-way, um, there's stuff that's kind of fallen through that, um, I know there's gonna be a lot of over, overlapping jurisdictions and trying to figure out where sources of trash are coming from, um, but that could be part of the big picture that I think could be helpful for motorists coming through that way, um, just as a larger scope of what could be a similar problem, overlapping problem, or maybe they're just not related and they're just, it's just kind of on the 290 right-of-way.
Councilmember Tovo?
Um, yeah, thank you, councilmember Harper-Madison. I appreciate, um, your comment and, and will certainly continue to try to, um, include you in those conversations. I think one of our very first, during your very first, uh, month on council, my office pulled together all of the information that we had as a co-sponsor and, and, um, very active participant in the work that, that came through council on Health South. We wanted to make sure that you had all of that information and to make that available to you, and have tried to continue to communicate with you about that. That is absolutely in your district and I look forward to working with you in that conversation. It's just over the border online, and I am, I am super interested in, in making sure that our council resolutions on that topic continue to go forward. You know, one of the, one of the things that happened last fall is that we did start a conversation about Health South and its interim use, but it was within the context of the ordinances, and so councilmember Kitchen and I and Alter and Poole had a, had a section asking for those costs in the resolution that didn't move forward, and as we were in a different quorum, we couldn't talk directly about that again. So, um, I do welcome and, and would look forward to collaborating with you about that conversation out, outside of here. But we have gotten some information from Economic Development, um, about the costs, but we have never been able to get those final costs despite repeated requests about it, and all of us are accountable to the public, many of whom have asked me, if you're looking at, um, purchasing a hotel, why wouldn't you consider the use of Health South in an interim? And I'd like to be able to really answer for, uh, with clarity what the actual repairs would cost, um, to have that be habitable.
All right, do you have a next presenter?
Yes, thank you Director Snipes. Next, I will call up the Communications and Public Information Office team who will provide the communications update.
Good morning, Mayor Protem, councilmember, city manager. My name is Laura Foss, I'm with the Communications and Public Information Office. This is Sarah Rodriguez from the Office of Design and Delivery, and I'm gonna give a, uh, short update on communications progress that we've made recently. Our partner collaborations with, uh, our partner, external, uh, partners continue. Um, as many of you know, we had a, uh, press conference week before last on the PIT event estimate. Um, we're continuing to collaborate, uh, on videos, social media and press events with, um, Echo on, on that. Um, we are also collaborating with Life Works on their exciting opening this afternoon. As a matter of fact, as soon as this meeting is over, I'll be heading over to that event. Um, and we have some videos that we're, uh, working with Integral Care and Life Works that I'll talk about in just a second. And then our internal collaborations continue, uh, with NHCD, we're working on, um, some housing, uh, uh, press release on permanent supportive housing targets. Um, we're working on a February press conference just to keep the drumbeat of, of information going out of the city. Uh, we continue collaborating on social media and press requests, most recently with Austin Public Health and the Downtown Austin Community Court. And then ATXN is super busy. Um, two air on, uh, January twenty-seventh, we'll have, um, a Homeless Advisory Council, uh, City Works, and then we're working on something called Chalkboard Stories, which is about, um, uh, those experiencing homeless, stories about those experiencing homelessness here in our community, um, and arch updates, arch updates. And then in pre-production, we have, uh, we're working on something for, about the Papa Resource Clinic, and, um, as I mentioned before, um, Life Works and Integral Care, we're working on a educational piece about Housing First, and then success stories on, um, youth who have experienced homelessness. Um, we're also working on a dashboard, and, um, uh, we're making progress on that, and I'll just say ahead of time that we'll be making appointments with each of your offices after this meeting to walk you through the dashboard in more detail, but we just kind of wanna give you a very high-level picture. Um, so some of the things that you should keep in mind as we go through this, what makes a good dashboard? Um, it tells a captivating story, um, and it gives a glimpse or a snapshot of the current environment, and it communicates and tracks goals. Now for the prototype that we've been working on, we think we have a really good handle on one and two, and we are making, working on number three and making that more robust. And to go through the dashboard, uh, just some screenshots of things that we're working on, I will kick it over to Sarah.
Thanks Laura, so I'm just gonna run through the dashboard and through information about homelessness data. Um, as you all know, as you've seen from the auditor, a lot of departments touch homelessness, whether they're directly serving or indirectly serving the homeless population, whether or not it's something that their work is impacted by. And so some departments don't collect data, some departments have started to collect data, they're having that conversation about data standardization, and then other departments collect, uh, wealth of data, and so we have to have a conversation about, um, how we show that data, um, you, what information, you know, is, uh, valuable, um, how we work in the bounds and in the absence of regulation around data sharing. Um, additionally, how we keep things up to date, and that's one of the reasons I think a dashboard is so important, because it keeps the information up to date. Um, so for the prototype, which is currently internal-facing, and we will share it with your offices when we meet, um, it's broken up into three sections, homelessness in Austin, homelessness and the impact on city services, and then providing services to people who are experiencing homelessness. And so we start the first section with stories of people who have experienced homelessness, um, talk about sort of the roots of homelessness, um, what kind of led to it, so trauma and loss, housing instability, injury, um, job loss, to really humanize all of the data that we're going to get into, because these are their individual stories. Um, and so it's, we give you a snapshot of the environment, um, through data, and then additionally, how, um, services are being impacted, um, through data, and then finally, the services that we're providing. Um, and I'll turn it back over to Laura to talk about next steps.
Thank you. Um, and so, next steps, we will, as I mentioned, be meeting with each of your individual offices to walk through the dashboard in more detail. Um, we'll own that housing, some housing data is missing from just this presentation. We do have some, but we're working with Echo to build that out, um, more robustly. Um, we'll also be convening meetings, um, with focus groups, including AHAQ, uh, for usability and accessibility testing, um, and we'll be collaborating with the Office of, uh, the Office of, uh, Performance Management to discuss, uh, to divine and, and refine key performance metrics and, uh, a governance structure, since there are many, many departments who are involved, both internally, and we have our external partners involved also. Um, so we'll continue that collaboration with Echo, Integral Care, um, uh, Central Health, et cetera. Um, and then we will come back and report to you, uh, on our progress after we do that usability testing and some of those, um, building those government structures. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilor Kitchen?
Thank you very much, this is really good work.
Thank you.
So I'm looking forward to the dashboard in particular. I have a quick question about the, um, um, I think, the homeless hotline, I think we may have been calling it? Would you be the right person to ask about that, or?
Yeah, um, 311 is doing the training for that, uh, for that service request.
Okay.
Uh, so, we've built out a homelessness service request, and so that is still in process, and then there will be a training for all of the 311 ambassadors, and I think that's taking place at the beginning of February, the training.
Okay, and then will, will there be some kind of, um, uh, public communication so that people know that there's a?
Yes, we will have, once the training is done, and then we'll have a short pilot, uh, to see if the resource, the service request needs to be refined.
Okay.
So once that is, um, we know that it's in a solid shape, we'll have a, a launch and there'll be communications around that.
Okay, and so is the goal then to, so that people have a easily rememberable number?
We have a number, I'm not gonna say it right now, but we do have a very easy number.
Okay, okay. So, and I understand it feeds into the 311 system?
It does.
Something that can be viewed, uh, for the public to, to view as the number to call if they have questions. So then the last part of it would be, uh, we talked about this before, and I don't, I don't know where y'all are in this, and that's the feedback loop afterwards. In other words, if someone calls and, um, reports something or asks a question or that sort of thing, um, how do we get back to them? Is that, is that in the works too, or?
It is, it needs work.
Okay. Okay, well I just request, as y'all work through that process, I think that that's gonna be real important, so people don't feel like they're just calling into, you know, a black hole.
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, last thing, do you have any idea what the timeline is? I mean, I know you're working through it as you explained, but...
I believe that, that 311 requested a three-month pilot.
Okay.
And so then we'll, after that three-month pilot, we'll report back to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, different, ready? Oh, councilmember Andrea?
As I was looking through the dashboard here, and, you know, I was looking at the EMS incidents, and, uh, it's, it sounded like, are the EMS incidents where an ambulance actually goes out there and address that?
Uh, yes, um, so there are two different types of measures. Usually it's the phone calls, which is a larger number, and the incidences, which is a smaller number.
And is there any finance, I mean, any kind of money attached to these calls that you can put together, how much it's costing the city, or the?
Um, that would not be, uh, a me question, I think that would be best directed to the EMS data analyst, but we can find out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think we're ready for the next presenter.
All right, thank you, Lauren and Sarah.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, as you may recall, that we've brought several, uh, service provider agencies to provide an overview of the work that they do. Previously, we've had Echo, we've had Life Works, and we've had Integral Care. With us today are the leadership from Salvation Army, we've got Rob Golding, who is the Chair of Salvation Army, we've got Lu, Major Louis Recline, who oversees the operations, as well as the Director of Social Services, Kathy Ridings. And so I will call each of them up here today, so that way they can provide you an overview of their service delivery.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem, councilmembers and, um, city staff and city manager, uh, for the opportunity to present to you today. We certainly appreciate the partnership and enjoy, that we enjoy with the city of Austin, and we want you to know, uh, that we certainly wanna be a part of the homelessness issue that just seems to be, uh, gets bigger and bigger every day. Uh, and we want you to know that, that it's our goal to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring to most of our vulnerable citizens, and that this is our central mission as a faith-based organization in Texas. We did modify some of these slides that you were originally giving to, um, avoid some redundancy and maybe some overload, um, but you have everything, so some of it we will just fly right over. Um, what you see now is an overview, and what is important to know about the Salvation Army is that we consider ourselves to be a critical part of the safety net of the, uh, population experiencing homelessness. We're tasked with meeting the basic survival needs of our most vulnerable citizens that are on the street twenty-four-seven and rapidly rehousing them. We are the largest provider of emergency shelter in central Texas. With the opening of the Wrath Gaver Center, when that is at full use, we will house five-hundred and thirty-five men, women, and families experiencing homelessness.
This slide addresses the, uh, Austin Shelter for Women and Children, which is one of our three shelter sites. Uh, this, of course, is, uh, a city-funded, uh, program just for women and children where we serve as the operator. Uh, this slide shows the, uh, outcomes for the last fiscal year. Uh, that was the first fiscal year following the renovation where we ramped up services after going through a long period of being, uh, partially, uh, shut down. So we measure, um, safe exits to housing, that's subsidized housing, rental housing with no subsidy, single-room occupancy, shared housing with family and friends, uh, and we also try to assist families to increase their incomes and become employed or increase their employment income if they're able to do so. Women and Children's Shelter is a low-barrier, housing-focused shelter with wraparound supportive services, trying to help women in crisis to become rapidly rehoused. Uh, we're very pleased to have a brand-new daycare center there, thanks to the, the recent renovation, and we provide a lot of outsourced childcare also, uh, to our residents there, most of whom are children.
Uh, our center downtown here, not too far from here, um, houses, uh, has two-hundred-and-forty-two beds. One of the things we do wanna, um, kinda talk a little bit about is our Safe Sleep Program, which is a part of the facility we have for the most vulnerable females and homelessness. Uh, and this is a place where they can come and, and they can, it's just for them, no one else is gonna be a part of that, uh, it, it helps them. Uh, now, I can tell you it's been overloaded, as you can imagine that, that we've had some, uh, on mattresses and, and what it takes to, to bring these ladies in, but to provide a safe environment for them, as you can imagine, is, is huge for us. Um, seventy percent of households who participate in our case management program will transition to safe and stable housing. And two-hundred-nineteen, three-hundred-seventy-six households, uh, we did about seventy-eight percent and seventy-five percent who receive employment services will improve their employment income, uh, as we have talked about the, um, you know, people being able to manage their rents. Um, this is sort of constructed in eighty-seven, it was renovated in twenty-eighteen, uh, and mostly operating dollars for this are privately raised. This is the largest multi-population shelter in the area. Uh, recent additions of operating funds, uh, from the city of Austin will allow up to eighty percent of the residents to be case-managed. Um, the percentage right now is about The percentage right now is about 35 to 40%. Other plans taking place, of course, as we move into the Rathgaber Center, will be to repurpose that area, to bring up the families that are in our downtown shelter now. They will be moving over into the Rathgaber Center. And then, our facility downtown is scheduled to be single occupancy only. And some of the performance measures that we put on ourselves for the Rathgaber Center, with some of our unique services, will be 100% focusing on housing and case management, full-service, rapid rehousing programs onsite to assist residents, employment assistance and skills training, outsourced childcare, child and family therapists, teachers and tutors. We'll have emergency, 40 emergency shelter rooms, 120 beds, and an average stay of up to 90 days, and then, an extended stay is, will be 92 beds. That's in the second part of that facility for most who have been over there. And so, those, we're, we actually are working towards a February open for Rathgaber at this point.
The Social Service Center downtown has currently five case managers for men, women, and families, Employment Services Coordinator. We have a computer lab with Learning Center teachers there, who work with folks during the day on job-related issues, and in the evening, they are there for the kids, to help them with their homework, keep them on track in school. Thanks to the additional money that you all have provided for us on a one-time basis, we're in the process of hiring three additional case managers, an intake caseworker, and a case management supervisor. We really think that increasing the percentage of individuals downtown who are in a case management program will have a very positive effect on the number of people who return to homelessness, and also, who go back and forth from Salvation Army to the Arch. So, we think that is a really good investment of money, and we're working very hard on The outputs that you see here are for the Social Service Center, and I think it's important to point out that efficiency in shelter is directly related to how fast you can move people through. We don't need more shelter if we can use our shelters efficiently and move people through as quickly as possible. So, getting people rapidly rehoused is our goal, and trying to find ways to directly link housing resources to our shelters is a big goal for us. Most of the residents on our enrollment lists here are currently waiting for housing through the coordinated entry process, and we do have opportunity for them to sign up onsite and do coordinated assessment.
There you see our Rathgaber Center, that, as we talked about, we move families in from downtown. When we reach full capacity, there'll be a lot of people, and they're mostly kids, as you can imagine, and so, that will help a number of families. What we have concerns about is our long waitlist and how to address that, and that seems to be something we just internally talk about and can't come up with a solution, simply because of our limited facilities and limited resources. And so, once we open that, we're just excited about the possibility that brings to the families. I think mainly of the young people, and I've said it to a number of you who probably have walked through there with me, can you imagine how scary it is at times downtown for these young people to have to be in the environment downtown in our facility, or sleeping in a car, or somewhere else in the city? But then, can you imagine taking them to Rathgaber that very first night, and mom or dad, or whomever is able to shut the door and lock the door, and they don't have to worry about somebody knocking on it, asking them to leave, asking them to move? I just can envision some child, just, you know, a little scared probably, but holding mom or dad or whomever, and feeling safe for the first time in a very long time. And I just can't, you know, that, to me, is just something that's going to be worth every picture that we're able to take down there.
So, this slide, I believe, shows the projected goals of persons served for the Rathgaber Center at full capacity, which should be 664 people. Now, as we're, as we have the money to open, we will start at at least 80 beds in the emergency shelter, and the extended stay portion, which is 92 beds, consists of suites that are kitchenette, living, dining space with two bedrooms. This is a unique way of sheltering folks that we haven't tried before. We're looking forward to it. This is for people who have higher barriers and are going to need a longer time in shelter to become self-sufficient.
Let me just add to that, the reason, one of the reasons that that won't be open right away is because we'll be moving folks from phase one into phase two as they qualify for that part of the program. As you can see, these are our funding sources. I do got to say, I'm a little worried about the foundation part of it. I think that's a little higher. I don't think we've done ourselves justice by putting in our, in our financial books the way that we have, but I will tell you, we are starting to go out more and get into more foundation families and go in that direction. But you see where, where we're coming from, and then, when we do have Rathgaber at 100%, that will add another $5 million to the type of funds that we need to raise.
We wanted to share with you our Salvation Army equal access policy, and just reassure everybody how dedicated we are to the provision of services without discrimination. This equal access policy pertains to all client services, including shelter and housing. We have, in this past year, also reached out to a consultant, Shane Whaley, who does training with staff, and have been able to provide extensive training in this area, all the way down to the folks who work on the desk, you know, in the facilities, because it is very important to us. The Salvation Army has followed the HUD guidance on this issue to the letter, and particularly in shelter, we go to a lot of, we spend a lot of time working on, you know, how to make sure that folks do not experience discrimination, and that they are able to select, they self-select the dormitory that they want to access, and then, we just provide services according to that. So, I don't know if you have any questions about that, you know, just feel free to ask.
I have a question about, does national origin include immigration status that you house people regardless?
I don't know if the Salvation Army's faced that yet, and so, we would have to get guidance from the corporate office if something like that were to occur.
Okay. Do you ask about that?
No. We do not.
Right. No, typically, it's when something occurs is when we see guidance.
Okay. Thanks.
There are, there are people in shelter who are not citizens, in Women and Children's Shelter, too.
And that's it for us. So, if you have any questions?
Thank you so much for your support.
I think there's some questions.
Councilor Alter?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for your work. It's really important for our community in talking with my constituents, who, through the important conversations we've been having, who've been asking about concrete ways to get involved. I often point to the Rathgaber Center and that O&M, and trying to help fund that gap with the shelter being ready to go forward. I just wanted to ask for some clarity on the numbers of the gap. At one point, you said a 500 million, and I'm thinking that you meant a 500,000 gap, or I just want to get clarity on what the actual numbers are. I think you misspoke and said 500 million, and so, I just want to make sure that I'm...
No, we need you to give us 500 million.
Right. So, I wanted to make sure that we had some clarity on, on that gap, and what's needed to make it fully functional, both for this year and then, moving forward, because I believe our funding was a one-time funding contribution.
Correct. Yeah. So, for, the way it's going to work out this year, because we're halfway through our fiscal year, we're very comfortable with where we are right now, and then, we're going to start moving towards funds for next year. So, at one point, had we opened up at full capacity, we would have had probably a million dollars in a funding gap. And so, through different initiatives that we have, with just opening what we're opening right now, then, we're very satisfied with where we are in terms of that part of our financial commitment to that program.
Okay. So, for next fiscal year, what is the gap that our community...
Five million dollars.
Five million dollars is the gap for the O&M that needs to be filled, so that we can house, what was the total?
Two...
Number of folks?
Well, no, at Rathgaber, it's 212 beds.
212 beds, okay. And if somebody wanted to get involved and contribute philanthropically, how do they get involved? I know I've heard some folks not getting calls back and stuff, and I want to make sure that it's very clear about where they need to contact, and who they need to contact if they want to help us address this gap.
Sure. They can obviously contact us at SalvationArmyAustin.org, or contact our main office on Mainor and ask for me.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Catherine Flanagan?
Well, first, I want to thank you for, for bringing your, the policies, the non-discrimination policies. I know that there are still parts of the community that, that there is a meme about the Salvation Army, and it's going to take a lot of work to undo that meme about the treatment, especially of LGBT, and specifically transgender folks who are experiencing this issue, and so, I want to just commend you for that work, and I know that you're continuing to, to do trainings and work in the community to overcome that, and so, I want to thank you for that, but also acknowledge that that belief still exists in our community and elsewhere, and so, it's something that we'll just continue to take effort. On Councilmember Alter's question, did I hear you say earlier in the presentation that you had hired staff based off of the additional funding the city had provided?
Correct.
So, so there have been long-term obligations created based off of the one-time funding, so you're making some assumptions about your future fundraising.
That's true.
Right? Okay. Which I would assume most organizations do. Do you also receive funding from or through the Echo Continuum of Care process?
Yes.
Okay.
We do. We have a Continuum of Care grant that's about $696,000, the Passages Program, that we share those funds with Safe Alliance.
Okay. So, I think, just, just to my colleagues, it's another example of, you know, we're putting the burden on the organizations to reach out in multiple places to get funding. We're putting multiple burdens of oversight on Echo and on us. I think there's a better way to manage the system, and if that takes a little time to get capacity at the Echo stage, then I think we should be talking about that. Thank you.
Councilor Tovo?
Thanks very much for your work, as well as for your presentation. I want to be sure I'm understanding the numbers downtown. I think you had a slide on that, but I'm not sure that, I think that's one of the additional ones that's in our packet. Could we see the slide for the downtown social service, for the downtown Social Services Center, in terms of housing capacity? And so, so those are the annual, okay, so these are...
That's the Rathgaber Center.
That's the Rathgaber Center. Maybe there wasn't a slide for the downtown.
Go to the picture of the downtown building.
She has a slide that isn't in the PowerPoint, is the issue.
Keep on that. Right there.
Thank you. That was the one I was looking for, and I couldn't take a good shot of it. And so, these are, this is the capacity downtown. So, within those 55 beds for families, how many would you estimate are children of that 55 number?
At any given time, we have at least 30 or more children downtown.
And I think the major referred to the environment downtown. I mean, that's a very challenging environment for kids. They need to take the bus back and forth, and then walk from the bus in our downtown area. And so, how soon, and so, when, when this is able to convert to single occupancy, will all of those 55, so that will, that will increase the number of beds that are available for single women, or, single men and single women to an additional 55? And how soon, how soon do you believe that you would be able to move the families? I know that, I think you referred to this in your presentation, but I missed the timeline on that.
Well, as soon as the Rathgaber Center opens, we'll begin transitioning families out of downtown. Now, these are individual case plans, because there are children enrolled in school, and, you know, people who can easily move and people who can't easily move, but we're also always housing people out. So, the, the best goal is to house people out of downtown and move, you know, and move people over. So, that's what we'll be doing, and then, we're also going to address the waitlist.
So, that can happen as soon as the Rathgaber Center opens, but some families may remain downtown because it works out better for their housing plan, or for...
We'll phase out, move people over, and then, repurpose that space for single adults.
Thank you. And then, when will the extended stay be opening? Is that a, is that a later phase, or is that something that will begin opening as well in February?
Well, we wouldn't begin with that open, because folks are going to transition from emergency shelter over there anyway. And I think because it's extra money to operate it, it'll be a delayed start on the extended stay. As soon as we have a group of families that can move over there, and we can afford to put them there, we will, we will start utilizing. The first and most important immediate step is to have that emergency shelter space at Rathgaber, with a private bathroom for every single family. That's a big deal at shelters.
Thank you for that. And so, in answer to Councilmember Alter's question, you named the $5 million figure, so that is, is that the total cost of operating, maintaining and operating the Rathgaber Center for one year?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. And the last time I checked, it was donors have the ability, they can go to your website and donate directly to the Rathgaber Center if they want to target their gift in that direction. And so, they can, when they do that, that will help fill that gap. Great. Thank you very much.
And families will be admitted to the Rathgaber Center without regard to gender of the adults.
Does the county, has the county contributed to this center?
No. Not yet.
Okay.
But there's been discussions of different ways they want to be involved, but we haven't.
Correct. There's, there's been some, some conversations. We just can't get to a point where both sides are comfortable with all the aspects of it.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you. Thank you for all that you do for our community.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, council, that concludes our, there we go. Mayor Protem, council, that concludes our update on homelessness initiatives. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.